Board call and declaration of quorum.
Barbara's not ready.
Mr. Laow.
Here.
Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mr. Tillman.
Here.
Dr. Matusy.
Here.
I'd like to welcome all our visitors. I don't have anyone signed up from public comments on the agenda items. I haven't had anyone contact me for speaking. Okay, we'll go on to number 2.3, recognition of teachers of the year.
So have four of our site teachers of the year and our district teacher of the year here tonight. I'm gonna start, Mr. Faulkner couldn't be here this evening, so I'm gonna introduce Ms. Gwynn at the high school. I think everybody knows who Ms. Gwynn is, and I've enjoyed this last year and a half getting to work with her and doing a few duties. Yes, sir?
I have something to read off that Mr. Faulkner sent me if I could read it off for her.
That sounds...
When you're finished.
That, that sounds great. I was just gonna commend that, you know, this year we've been looking for a math teacher, and we had to make some changes to the schedule, and just her ability to work with and, you know, Mr. Faulkner relayed to me, you know, she's just willing to do whatever it takes for the kids, and just her schedule and never once was concerned about, you know, oh, this affects my personal schedule, or this is, it's about, you know, the kids. And so, working just firsthand and getting that, I mean, I commend you, Ms. Gwynn, for that, but Mr. Frank, I want to turn it over to you.
Okay, so Stephanie Gwynn graduated from school policy with her bachelor's degree with Oklahoma State University with her master's degree. She has been asked to do a lot of special in the school year, having to abandon a new math with our class as she was thrilled to start teaching. She also had to give up teaching one of her favorite subjects, intrigue, to teach the students who needed algebra II this year. She did all this without ever questioning it, at least not to me, it was a smile on her face. For a time of about a month before this complete shift, she was working with all the algebra II students on top of her, already very full load to ensure they were able to get what they needed to be successful. Through it all, she never faltered or allowed the kids to see how taxing it was for her to do all of this. She did not waver in the face of extreme adversity, and she, and still was able to come to school every day and be exactly what her students needed her to be. Not only a great math teacher, but a great mentor that cares tremendously for each student who walks through the halls, particularly those that walk through her door. Hennessy, I've been blessed to have her back for the last eight years, and hopefully we'll get to hold on to her for many years to come.
Perfect. Mr. Frank, I'm gonna just let you introduce middle school teacher of the year.
Yeah, sounds good. So, the middle school teacher of the year is Janelle Riddle. She graduated from the University of Central Oklahoma with a bachelor's degree in education. She has 31 years of teaching experience. She's taught several subjects over the year, from elementary music to language arts to now fifth and sixth grade middle school science. She's always felt a calling to be a teacher. It's important to her to do her best to let each student know what they matter to her. She tries her best to support and encourage them to reach their fullest potential. She's a rock star for me. Every day, you know, I, when I work late, you know, she's still there. So sometimes I'll come back from an extracurricular and her vehicle's still there in the evening. So, I know she puts in countless hours, you know, very valuable to my team, and she's just someone I can really lean on at all times. Thank you, Ms. Riddle. All students.
Ms. May.
My teacher is Donna Jones for the early childhood. Unfortunately, she's not able to be here tonight, but she's been in our district for nine and a half years. She has experience in teaching the regular ed and the special ed in the elementary and early childhood. She now works with the three-year-olds. She kind of started up that autism program for special needs, and they work on foundational skills as well as the special ed kids with pre-k and kindergarten. She oversees three parent professionals who help students with special needs. She teaches the three- to four-year-old early bird classes for us, and she went to an intense doc training school. So, the therapy doc, Marshall, can help our students if they have a problem or are anxious. Marshall is great also at helping students and teachers calm down, myself as well. She also has attended our Oklahoma A-plus summer summit to help us become an Oklahoma A-plus school. She goes above and beyond in helping others. She's a wonderful resource and pro at managing behaviors. She is always willing to help anyone that may need assistance with ideas and resources. She's very patient, even when a child is not being very nice to her, and she never loses her cool. When she's having a bad day, she doesn't let it affect how she treats her kids. She takes a lot of pride in what she does and look out to have her as our DCC teacher of the year.
All right, I'm excited to introduce Mrs. Rachel Franks as our site teacher of the year. Stand up, we're all making stand up. And also, Mrs. Franks is our district teacher of the year. And Mrs. Franks has a bachelor's degree from SNU in music. She also has a master's degree in educational leadership from SNU. She's certified to teach music in elementary, and this is her tenth year to teach, three years in Puppen City and six years in the city. Mrs. Franks has high expectations for student learning and behavior. She's so consistent with that, constantly pushes students to be their best, holds that bar high for them every day, and never settles for less than their best. Students that cause trouble in her classroom, students that cause trouble in other classrooms do not misbehave in music. You can't teach people what she has, either you have it or you don't. She integrates technology in her classroom, Chromebooks, panels, and instruments. Through rhythm and patterning, she helps teach reading and math standards for each grade into her lessons for pre-k through fourth grades. If you've been to her music programs, you know that they're second to none, they're just amazing what she does with our students pre-k through fourth grade in her music programs. Usually after every, you know, music program we have, I just have several parents come up to me and compliment Mrs. Franks, better not let her go, better pay her extra, don't let that one get away. Those are some of the compliments I have. When we go to fine arts, we really stand out from the other schools around the county. And to be honest, I like going to fine arts, but I hate it because I don't like the other principals in the county to seek her attention. So, it's kind of a blessing and a bit a curse. She volunteers to help out at school functions like field day, heritage night, and end-of-the-year celebrations, where she plans music and dance activities for kids and parents. She is the heart and soul of our eagle rallies by leading our school in birthday song, patriotic songs, and fun dances. She binds our school together as one. I call her the heartbeat of our school. Her enthusiasm is always at a high level. She generates excitement for students to learn and have fun. She gives our school a shot in the arm in injecting energy and high expectations. Working with Mrs. Mack's school, the ECC, Mrs. Franks has the past two summers attended the A-plus workshops. She was recently awarded the A-plus spelling award in A+. This is where she will receive extra intense training and will teach other teachers across the state how to incorporate music into their instructional lessons for A-plus schools. That's a huge and a privilege for her to have that honor. So, we're excited to have Mrs. Rachel Franks, not only as our site teacher of the year, but also our district teacher of the year.
Okay, thank you all very much. We appreciate all the effort that you teachers provide to us, and I'm sure that most of those kind words were well thought out and well meant and well intended on your behalf. So, congratulations to all.
Consent... Oh. They can leave if they choose. They're more than welcome.
And you can leave if you choose.
After we return from exam session. And Barb will want your picture, by the way.
And Barb will want your picture. I think they got their award actually at the mall. Did I?
Yeah. Yeah. I like looking at the case.
We'll pause, go ahead. Go away. Go ahead.
You need to go up there and shake her hand. Please.
With the superintendent.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that any of the board members would like to pull out for specific discussion?
Item...
All good, I'll enter the motion.
Second.
Mr. Laow.
Aye.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Tillman.
Yes.
Dr. Matusy.
Yes.
Item four, regular business, item number four, 4.1, discussion of possible board action regarding plans to improve drainage and prepare the ditch on the east side of the campus for future parking.
So, Scott from Holson Engineering is here again with us. Follow-up from last month, went back and made some of the changes discussed. Last month, you have four attachments on here. Assembled meeting, the civil plans show all the changes that have been made. Think we made sure the parking spaces are 10-foot wide. The concrete referred to at the walkway, that'll all be tore out, that's part of the demo plan, so that'll be added. That's the sidewalk referring to basically the drainage ditch. From the north end to the south end, where it comes in, that's the only place it'll be over the water line, and they're gonna contact the city to see if any repairs need to be made prior to them doing that. And then everything else in between will be five feet toward Mitchell Road, so not on top of, directly on top of the water line. So, I'll have Scott hit on the point of the question that was asked today. Patrick asked about on the east side, far east side, where you have parking stops or the parking blocks, doing it that way as opposed to running a continuous curve, so Scott will address that. And I think I've addressed everything else. Questions?
I was just curious if we had had an opportunity to visit the town.
I have left a message, but unable to, have not heard back yet at that point in time. Scott may answer that, he may have got a call back, I don't know. But so, but he's reached out to them as well. So, Scott, turn it over to you.
Scott Holson Engineering, and I'll kind of give you a summary of the changes from the last time we saw it. Pretty well better, but all the parking spaces are now 10, 10 feet wide. We have three ADA spots here, and then we added two more ADA spots right here. Since we're redoing the sidewalk, we'll be able to make that ADA compliant, which we couldn't do last time because we weren't redoing the sidewalk. We added additional spacing in this drive between these two aisles apart here, so it's easier to back in and out with the big trucks.
What was the distance, 14 feet?
It's now closer to 17 foot. And then we also added some parking lights through this concrete strip right here. And I think that pretty much covers it, 10-foot wide, we're down to about 85 spaces. And like we said, Jason said, we're gonna have the tie-in at the corner here is gonna be on the water line. I've reached out to the city, I've not heard back, but we'll get that figured out hopefully next week.
So, is it designed to drain both to the north and to the south to those, or drain towards Mitchell Road, or just settle and pond?
It will have area inlets along the...
Originally, there were inlets in the parking area, those have been removed, so the rainwater, the water that's coming onto the parking lot, where does it drain to?
Okay, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna end up with some inlets along this dry aisle here, so we can get some adequate drop to catch those, and then we'll kind of have it graded so it overflows. If it gets clogged or something happens, it'll kind of overflow to the south to other area inlets.
I had a question regarding the parking stops as opposed to just curbing that entire area along, here along Mitchell Road.
You'd probably have some adverse effects if you curbed Mitchell, because it's a fairly flat road. It wasn't designed for curbing gutter system, and it would probably have an impact on the quality of that road and the life of it. It would be better just to let the water shed off Mitchell onto the parking lot and kind of act as it has been.
Another question I had was, it's not this parking area that is in the gray, but that is to the south, that the parking area immediately beside the...
Now?
Yeah, right there. Are there, will there be spaces there? I mean, that's a large parking area for only 13 spaces. Will there be spaces then put in along Mitchell Road, like where those, the green enfilled ditch saw lines?
Yes, we could add spaces along here where there would be no additional concrete, or we could extend some concrete where the, the green grass area is and add spaces there. But yes, there will be additional spaces on that, that east end.
What is the total number of spaces that we will have now that they've been all moved to 10 feet?
In this area, you go from 33 to 85, in the hatch area.
I'm sorry, did you hear?
33 to 85.
Dressing up that old ditch.
So, I was, I was with Scott about this earlier today, kind of getting the timeline of events that we proceed. Of course, we proceed and say, and fill in at any time if I'm, if I'm wrong. But bidding documents, it'll take them about four weeks to prepare the bidding documents at that point in time. Everything he brings back, you know, just like the stripes in that parking lot that Mr. Griffin just asked about, but the entire bidding package would be presented to you on the final time before it goes out to bid. So, that'd be approximately four weeks. We'd probably have to have a special board meeting, and then you're looking at about another four weeks, so the bid process has to be 20 days. Then, you're looking at about another four weeks for them to reference check, get all the paperwork, make sure bonds, you know, bids, everything is accurate. So, and then by the time they mobilize, you're talking, probably the earliest they could get started would be first of June, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, that's most likely.
Most likely. Biz with the principals today, because we talked about, I did, I did ask today, did Jeff say 90 days, he thought, assuming?
Probably 90 to 105 days.
Okay, because it doesn't rain in Oklahoma anymore, so we won't have any delays there. But if, assuming, that's what caused it to take, is it raining, you know, build this, that's more than fine. Biz with the principals, three of the principals today have to make alternate plans on bus drop-off, and they can make that work. They said that's not an issue whatsoever. Costs, you're looking at a cost of the demo, or excuse me, the cost estimate that they provided, which obviously they're not held to by any means, but just to give us idea of working numbers, was approximately $850,000. We are in tremendous shape right now. Check, that can be taken out of general fund since it's repaired, replaced. We've on pace to increase our carryover, so I think this would be a good investment to put back into the infrastructure, and just something else that we do not have to take to the taxpayers for a bond issue. Something to be a long-term investment. With that, trying to think, what else am I leaving out, Scott, that we needed to talk about, or that you had questions on?
I bring up the town because there's an article in the, all about Hennessy, the Post last week. It mentions, and I don't know if this was attributed to anybody, but it mentioned that they're working on Mitchell Road south of us, basically kind of doing the same thing, filling in that ditch, putting in drainage. And it's, it mentioned at the end of the article that they had, they were thinking about what the next steps would be to come up towards a school. So, I asked Jason to talk to the town to see if they had any plans that we were, you know, we could coordinate with, or were they planning on doing this, or, you know, we get, you know, one time there was a discussion about maybe we could split that cost. So, I don't know where the town is on, on their project.
I don't know, but I mean, they're looking at starting around the first of June, if everything goes through, then, I mean, make a push onto town, if they need to do any repairs or replace a portion of that line, that's gonna be covered up by the parking lot. The last thing you want is a break.
Well, that's why.
And have to tear it up.
Yeah, definitely, and that's where he will, I mean, this whole thing could be thrown off real quick, and what a timeframe I gave, just once he communicates with them, for sure.
So, very good, so we need to...
If everybody's comfortable, there's nothing you need to approve before giving the go-ahead, because like I said, the bidding documents will come back at the next board meeting. You got the proposal in there that references the man-hours, it's not the contract, but it's just the man-hours that they use, and, you know, printing services, whatever it is, that's all in there. So, that will allow them to move forward, then we can sign, I'll sign the proposal, allows them to move forward, we have approved or disapproved, but you'll see the bidding documents at the next meeting. Whether it's, well, I take that back, it will not be the next regular meeting, because in three weeks, they will have it then, we'll have to have a special sometime right after spring break, because I don't want to wait till second week of April.
So, we need a motion to approve the plans and approve the drainage?
Just need a motion to approve the proposal executed by Holson Engineering to move forward with project.
I make a motion to approve the proposal by the engineering company to move forward with this proposal.
Thanks, Scott, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And you're welcome to leave too.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Dr. Matusy.
Yes.
Item 4.2, discussion of possible board action regarding a band trip to the wonderful city of St. Louis, Missouri in 2023.
Yeah, I don't know that necessarily requires board approval, but we just want to put that on there, make it ours, just want to communicate to the board where they're going, and they'll write up their, mine's not loading, but they'll write up to where all they're going on their trip to St. Louis this spring, so it'll be right after school.
Well, I'll tell you, they're gonna go see the Gateway Arts.
Yeah, go to St. Louis. I got my, I got my printout, it's just on, I got my printout now.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and read them. They're gonna perform as a concert band for the music in the Parks Festival at West High School in Cedar Hills, Missouri, and then they'll spend the day at Six Flags St. Louis.
I don't think this requires tax.
Just wanted to make sure you guys were fully aware of it.
Sound one, new business.
No new business, tax on.
Superintendent's reports.
So, facilities, kind of update on some summer projects, things we got going. I think I mentioned to you some of these, but just had to write everything down, so don't leave anything out. But we're gonna look to re-carpet four classrooms, we got the high school classroom here in auditorium, and then three at the middle school. Last summer, we fixed up the room on the north side of the old art room, or the current art room. This summer, we're gonna fix up the art room itself, do the same thing, match it up, paint the ceiling, paint the walls. It's already had the new lighting.
That's a good question.
Yes, sir.
So, are we, we still have a lot of carpet, or do we have a lot of the harder surface flooring? Is carpet still in all the classrooms?
It's not in all the classrooms, no. We looked at a couple that I thought maybe, but they're tile, and they want to continue in tile. We have one, the steam, they would prefer to go to tile.
Just perfect.
Yeah, just opposite because of the activities they do, but others, they like it for sound, you know, sound reduction, so it's just kind of personal preference, yeah. Outside, canopy for the stage there at the outdoor classroom, Ms. Mack is leading the charge on getting the canopy for the stage, and then two other smaller canopies for outdoor areas, one over the picnic tables, and then another over the sandbox. Max's room, Ms. Fisher, she's been working with Keith on redoing that and upgrading the kitchen area, flooring in the main room, new appliances, new cabinetry, and just fixing it up. It's pretty old, and we're in a situation to do that. Football field, this is one that I think I left out at previous board meetings, but at this with Patrick and some of the boosters about it. But at the football field in that northwest corner where they have the picnics, is just putting a picnic shelter there. The one we're looking at is right at 60 by 30, so have a nice area for all the pre-game meals that we have.
Would that include paving that entire?
Yeah, yeah, and that's what I pulled it to, wherever we center the pavilion, go ahead and take the concrete west to the fence and north, that way we don't have a little strip of grass, whether it's two feet or three feet, whatever it is, to go ahead and take it west and to the north. Look at, hopefully time will allow, getting a covered walkway from what would be the southeast corner, I know there's not really a corner on the round dome, but the southeast entrance doors to the southwest entrance doors at the high school, getting that covered has been talked about for a long time, finally getting on the, on the road to do that. Got one small shade structure out there for Mr. Crosswise, putting up over 25 by 20. And then, looking at doing something for the daycare on, we have some storage in there on that south end, and if we could remove the inventory in there and place elsewhere, that would allow us five to seven spots probably, it's based on square foot, so we even know it's a bit, it would allow us some more spots, because right now, we're currently full of the daycare, right? And so, think next year, we'll have some open spots, we're losing some, and we don't know that we're gonna fully replace them, but just to prepare down the road, we're looking to move that inventory elsewhere. One of the considerations was the old football concession stand, but we need a door wide enough to be able to take a pallet in, so when you're talking, cutting the door and everything else, I don't know about that. The room that we cleaned out last year on the north side of the art room, that would probably be the best, there's double doors there, we could move that inventory over there at low cost. I just hate putting much money in that building when, you know, there's possible down the road to tear the building down or whatever, you know, if you're not gonna fix it up, we wouldn't consider tearing it down anyway, you know? So, it's used for a little bit of storage, but we checked the two cargo containers out here, and they're free of space, so we would have plenty of storage, like moving that all over if we wanted to look, they were looking, taking that down, and water clays in that area, so.
The area of the, at the daycare, the area you're talking about picking up, is that a third of that building, or a quarter?
I don't know, I don't know if it's quite a third.
Probably closer to a quarter.
I should have gone over and measured the square footage of it beforehand, but I'll, I'll follow up with that and even think so.
It's a pretty big back there.
That's what I thought, I was thinking, you know, if you could expand that by another third, that gives you quite a bit of...
So, get more kids, storage?
What is our capacity for students, I mean, not students, but...
Twenty.
Yeah, twenty.
It's twenty, and that's...
Yeah, sixteen, but...
How many staff members are...
Four.
There's four.
If, if we go above the 20, is that four staff for every five, or one person for every five children?
Required ratio?
There is, it depends on the age, like if they're in, then you have to have two in the room, depending on how many are.
My wife would tell you one per seven.
One and a half.
And then you occasionally...
I don't think you made me the A test minimum requirement.
Do you have to have a commercial driver's license?
So, that's all I have, that's all I have on upcoming projects.
Enough about you.
Yeah, some, I mean, yeah, the building projects next. On the facilities then, following up, that's current summer project. Talk about other projects moving forward, obviously, we got things with the drainage ditch, and I want to back up just a second, just say we're, we're very fortunate with our general fund income, you know, our gross production checks, the last two months have been over $500,000 each. It's just put us in a situation to where we've been able to increase our building fund and general fund, and, you know, talked about a lot of these infrastructure investments that I think a lot of people have to go do a bond issue, so I think if we can do as many of these. So, where I'm at right now, bigger projects moving forward is, you know, we're gonna increase our carryover quite a bit in general fund if we do not put it into these, and then the state's gonna get involved within a year or two on our carryover penalty. So, putting it in, you know, you, we could have anywhere between the combination of building in general, two to two and a half million dollars that we could put back into some projects. Obviously, this one, if it comes in at 850, great, but, you know, we're more than in the clear on that one. So, it then goes to what do we want to consider next? We've talked about on the west side of the baseball field, north side of, northwest side of football, starting where the aquatic, city park, aquatic center parking is, of tearing out those tennis courts, wrapping around where the entrance is, you know, tearing all that out, and new parking that would match what the city has at the aquatic center. So, if we're, if we're interested in doing something like that, you know, Holson Engineering, they can do the parking lots, they could give us a cost estimate before they ever get into anything like this. But we're gonna pick up, we'd pick up a lot of parking spaces there that people sometimes might park on the tennis courts if they organize. Then other things to look at, the, an extension of the transportation building on Highway 51. You know, Gary still has, we still have buses, we still have maintenance vehicles down here by the football field. It'd be nice to vacate everything and move in one central location. Have an office built up there with all buses, then you could build a secure perimeter fence and do something like that. Obviously, that would have to be solely out of building fund. But if that's the only project we got coming out of building, we're approximately at a million dollars in that right now for what we would be doing in there, I think that would be more than enough to cover that extension. Then we could repurpose the building by the football field, whatever we needed as time goes. You know, portion of that, we've already put an indoor hitting facility for the softball girls in there on the very east end. So we wanted to convert some more stuff into athletics, fine, or whatever. We have that option, because that room would be there and now the transportation department would be centralized. Other carryover would be from that northwest corner of the football field, do we want to consider parking then along the east side of Mitchell Downs and wrap around to where our football boys and the visitors park? You know, that would be an option to do that. I did call Jackson's, they're coming back, Emalish and Albin, and they're coming back to tear out the concrete. The county just didn't have the time to get to it like they originally thought they would. So they're gonna tear out the concrete from 50, from Mitchell and 51, all that on that corner. And then there's a little pad right north of the transportation building.
When?
He's gonna come give me a quote sometime there, come look at it this week. And give it, last time I called him, he looked at it, gave me a quote. When I confirmed, he was here with three days. So I don't know what his schedule is this time, but he gets around to it pretty quick. So we are gonna do that one. And once again, that should ought to be, that should really probably have been more of a building project upfront as far as tearing it out, but then that begs to what do we want to do with that property? You know, about the only thing that I can see right now is maybe just some signage, directing people where to go, LED display, you know, announcing announcements, whatever may be, so. And then, let's see, that's...
And signage, that might be something the town would want to contribute.
Jack, you know, they've just repurposed the branding of Hennessy to do something, maybe to tie in with that as well, yeah. But that was bigger projects. So of those, you know, if we do the parking, one thing, if we do the parking at the baseball field, that would probably be the second. And then, I mean, if I had to do my pick, I would go to that parking and then the extension of the transportation building. That would be where I'm at based on what I know what I, or think I know what my needs are. And one thing I'll hit on that, this current drainage ditch product, project and the baseball field, even if we are able to coincide those together or delay whatsoever. When it finally does rain here again, that will not increase or affect any current drainage for any landowners down, it's not, you know, it's the same amount of water in the same space. It'll all end up in the same spot, so it's just, it's not a creation. It's not gonna divert it to anybody's different property or come in from a different angle. So did want to hit on that, just make sure everybody understands. But I think the main thing is, is just really trying to take a chance to invest in our infrastructure and not have to run a bond issue.
I think I mentioned in passing maybe last, or last meeting, but the lighting to the west right out here used to be addressed for the parking, especially immediately out of the, this, this facility. And maybe I didn't talk directly to you about it, but...
In the, is the parking lot or auditorium side?
On both sides really, but especially on the, maybe the auditorium side, there's just...
It's dark.
We could all recess and go out there right now, it is...
I can catch it on the way out.
There is, there is not lighting out there.
Okay.
It did, we really need to address that.
Any other needs, I'll write that down.
Did we get anything more on the bleachers for the football for handicapped seating?
Yeah, Mr. Hugboom is working on that, yes.
Is it gonna be on both the visitors and the home side?
Yes. It'll just be a little platform to the east on both. We're split that ramp. Okay, well, I'll, any other suggestions? And I'll get to working on these projects as well and start getting the cost estimates. And that way we can pick and choose what direction we want to go. Okay, all right. Next thing, the updated bond tax schedule. Where to start on that?
That was good reading.
That is good reading.
Summarize it for me, please.
So tax implications due to the wind farm decision. And, you know, Kingfisher County, the lawsuit we were in set a precedence for not just Hennessy, the state, but also national. That was a landmark decision, not in favor of schools. And it dealt with the production tax credits that originally had been assessed to windmills. And the courts ruled that they are not, they're not, they're not valued. And so to where we can value and collect revenue off of them. So basically, that affects us negatively 48% for what the value of that wind farm was. So that drops us from roughly $87 million net assessed valuation to $74 million. So it affects us not only the amount of general fund we will carry, give a little bit, building fund, but the tax implication. And I'll pull up this bond tax schedule.
Take, I might do it on here soon, we'll see.
Copper, I need to go.
That always works.
Get to the folders, to get to the folders, what do I need to do?
He's like me, he just keeps pushing things.
Until somebody gets up and comes and does it for you.
It's like he's tight.
Okay, initial tax schedule. Go over the initial first. Your initial tax schedule was basically in 2027, it was gonna be a seven-year issue. So when the bonds would finally be paid off was 2034, okay?
Why did you sit down, Todd?
You may want to just stay here. You may want to just stay here.
Chair of their vote?
I don't either. I did that. I need to, here we go. Need to open up, but... We'll get there.
Me and my wife both have the remote.
Okay, current. This was the one, when did we go over the last tax, when Jordan talked, we talked about, because our valuation had grown so much that they had backed off the years they applied that revenue coming in. So this was the last one you have seen, basically saying current plan. So in 2026, they were gonna sell a three-year issue, so then basically would have paid off in 2030, okay? So that's what I showed you last time. When we talked at that point in time, we were saying, hey, get on the ball in case you're gonna need to run a big bond issue. Probably need to start planning, getting that thought process. That way, if you need to run an election in the '25, '26, somewhere in this timeframe, then, then you can. And then that way, it would pick up as a better one came off. And so you don't see a big tax increase. So that was the last that we saw. Now this will be the last time that I go through this list. So adjusted bond schedule.
You're on, sir.
I'm gonna, remind me to come back to amounts protested, because you had that question for me, Dr. Matusek. So adjusted bond schedule, this is the last one. This is the last one that Jordan prepared for us. So what he has done, based on that new valuation of $74 million, that is gonna have to carry, in 2027, it'll be a three-year issue. So the last final year of paying off is 2030. But with that, obviously, there is some sort of tax increase. Because what's happened is, is when they put this out originally, he thought the district was worth $87 million and Kingfisher Wind was gonna pay that portion of the $13 million difference. Well, right here, in April of '21, is when they sold 1.6 of those two, of that two-year issue, okay? So they sell them, we gotta collect it. Well, now, the valuation drops. So he used the analogy, it's like if six of you go out to eat, you're sitting around, and when you finish your meal, right at the very end, two people, emergency happens, they have to leave. Well, they bring you the check. Now four people are paying for the check instead of the original six. That's what happened here. We still have to get as a district, as all the district taxpayers, we have to get to that 1.6. But when Kingfisher Wind backs out, local landowners, taxpayers are the ones picking up the difference. So that's where the tax increase comes from. Does that make sense to everybody? So that tax increase, current millage rate right now, what we have right now is 21.79. When they, when we sold this, we were 19.86. So there was a little bit of a bump there. There should be, he's projecting it to go up to 22.52 with millage. But there's no way to tell, because we may have pipelines that are unaccounted for in this. There may be pipelines removed, or there may be more oil wells come in. It's whatever's there on January 1st. So, I mean, within reason, he's always been pretty close, they do their best. They're just not 100% accurate for that reason. So clear as mud to everybody?
But then after that, based on additional sales, we'll be back to our 17.
Based on that, then as it carries back out, yes, that is correct. We drop back down into that 17 range and get back on track. But it's just this two-year bubble that we're in, because we sold them here, we thought our valuation was here. Two people left the table, so that's, that's where we're at. So with that, where we originally had talked about, looking at a bond issue or possibly start talking about one and planning in a year, two years, we can delay that. Now, he did say that we've grown enough that if all of a sudden something came up, that we needed to run a smaller bond issue in that $2 million, $3 million range, we could. But once again, we're fortunate enough with our general fund and building fund revenues. I don't think we have to consider that. So that's what I think that we can do, projects that we probably normally...
Outside of emergencies.
Outside of an emergency, yes. Which if it's an emergency, you more likely be something insurance would take care of. So we're really in pretty good shape considering all it could have been. I know there's some, one school district that their valuation was affected 65%. The wind farm in their, in their district was 65% of the tax-paying property. So their millage, where we're talking about this, which is anywhere from a 3% to 5% tax increase, their millage increased like 20%. So, I mean, this is, this is not just a Hennessy deal. This is not anything that, you know, Jordan or any tax advisor could see coming, because there's never been a lawsuit decision like this. And so unfortunately, everybody in the state and nationwide may feel the, you know, feel the effects of this. So any questions on that? I hope I explained that for everybody.
I think the original, that was all originally done, I think they were using pretty conservative estimates on all of it. Sure glad we did. I hope the patrons and landowners...
Amounts protested, Dr. Matusek had asked this, so asked what it affected. Those four years, this is, but this is money we never saw, because that had been money in escrow and that was that roughly 48% of those production tax credits that we never received. So it's not money we lost, so to speak, it's just money we were promised and never got. But it would amount into the four, the general building and city fund of right at $3.8 million. So had that never been, had that never been, and this is what roughly would affect $400,000 in general fund, $57,000 in building fund that we will not collect, that had it been there, that we would have... And I, Mark, I can get you all this information later if you need it. Anything else? You guys want to see my home place or anything? I think it's all I have on there.
Yeah, but you're gonna have to enter it into the public record now.
Acre to my own place? All righty, thank you. Personnel, one resignation, one, Evan Sprayberry. And he's requesting, he is going out of state, going to the university where he actually played and GA'd before, and due to recruiting cycle, he's asked to get out. They've asked him to ask us if he could get out of his assignment. And so this is Mr. Faulkner, and with Al Ted, we can, we can make that work. I need to keep him from getting a job like this when, you know, I think we, I think we can make it work. So he's actually, his last day will be February 24th. We'll get his golf duties covered to where we make sure we have the boys and girls golf coaches.
Is that Baker?
You just hate taking that over.
Baker?
Yes, Baker, yes, sir. All right, that's all I have.
All right. Item number seven, personnel. Proposed executive session to discuss employment principles for the 2023-24 school year. The employment involved Ed, alternate education teacher, assistant coach, speech pathologist, and a high school math teacher, and replacement of Christopher Cho, seat number four on the Hennessy Public School of Education. 2500 section 307.
Move to enter.
Second.
Mr. Lau.
Hi.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Tillman.
Yes.
Dr. Matusek.
Okay, so as we return to open session, I'll note that the, we entered into executive session at 7:50 PM. Only agenda items 7.1 through 7.7 were discussed. There were no votes taken. Present were myself, Mr. Griffin, Mr. Tillman, and Dr. Matusek. And also, our guest was Mr. Sternberger. We entered open session at 8:58 PM. Discussion of possible board action regarding the employment of the following principals for the 2023-24, 2024 school year. Stacy Mack, Barry Crosswhite, Ricardo Torango, and Josh Faulkner.
I'd recommend to employ those people as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lau.
Hi.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Tillman.
Yes.
Dr. Matusek.
7.3, discussion of possible board action regarding the employment of the following certified positions on a temporary contract for the 2023-2024 school year. We have an alternative education teacher, as well as assistant football coach and assistant baseball coach. We have a speech pathologist, and we have a high school math teacher.
So I'd recommend to the board Nathan Hill for our Al Ted, assistant football and assistant baseball, Kim Lester for speech, and Jacob Bullis for the high school math for the temporary contract beginning next year.
Move to employ.
Second.
Mr. Lau.
Hi.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Tillman.
Yes.
Dr. Matusek.
Yes.
Item 7.4, discussion of possible board action regarding the employment of Ayla Plumley as a daycare worker for the remainder of the 2022-2023 school year.
And recommend Ayla for that position.
So moved.
Mr. Lau.
Hi.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Tillman.
Yes.
Dr. Matusek.
Yes.
Item 7.5, discussion of possible board action regarding paying a $750 stipend to staff who attend a 72-hour armed security guard training.
Make that recommendation as well. So moved. Second.
Mr. Lau.
Hi.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Tillman.
Yes.
Dr. Matusek.
Yes.
7.6, discussion and possible board action regarding approval of the following, or of adjunct teachers. And I think you were...
Yeah, I was sort of... Yeah, there's no motion or recommend on this, hiring as listed. And just to clarify, this is a housekeeping that we should have done back in August. This is not anything to do next year, this is just for paperwork to get us through this year on teachers who are certified, but maybe not certified in something that they're actually teaching. So this is not an extension or renewal of anybody's employment for next year, just finish it up for the.
And no emergency certification.
No, yeah, yeah, that is correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the listed adjunct teachers.
I'll second that.
Mr. Lau.
Hi.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Tillman.
Yes.
Dr. Matusek.
Yes.
Item seven point seven, discussion of possible board action to appoint an individual to Hennessy Public School Board Seat Number Four for the remainder of the term. I would like to nominate Mrs. Amy Charmison for that position.
I'll second that.
Mr. Lau.
Hi.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Tillman.
Yes.
Dr. Matusek.
Yes.
Moving to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Lau.
Hi.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Tillman.
That whole hour wasted.
Mr. Tillman.
Yes.